Okay. Good evening, welcome to the Monday, April the fourth. Committee of the whole community development meeting. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda as it is presented. I need a mover and a seconder for for the agenda.
I'll move that.
Move the councillor Cameron seconded by Chris Ward, all in favor of the agenda. Good disclosure of community area interest or the general nature of, does anyone have any interests to declare? Good hearing, none, moving on to number four, which is business arising from the minutes. If anyone has any business arising from minutes.
No, no.
Great, moving on to number five, then delegations and presentations, there are none, so we're on six A, which is the interim control bylaw. Planning study, the results of that, which is Mr. Steve Pence, and I see that, I think it's Steve that's here for Nova Tech to join us for that discussion. I'm setting a record pace here tonight. And I'm not used to paperwork either. So, welcome, welcome Steve.
Thank you.
And Wendy, do you want to do a little background for us? To break us into this discussion?
Um, yeah, I, I, I can, I can get us started.
Steve to do it, you want to do it?
Uh, sure, I'll, I'll just get us started and I'll throw it to Steve then. Through the chair, please. So, back in June last year, council passed an interim control bylaw with all land building structures within a defined area. And when you have an interim control bylaw, it allows you some time to do a study to further investigate whether or not changes to the zoning bylaw or official plan are needed, and our year is quickly coming to an end here, so we're close to the deadline. And we have that study here on the agenda today.
Good. There is a recommendation with it. And I'll read that recommendation, the recommendation is that committee recommend that council receive the interim control bylaw. Planning study as prepared, which recommends that they that the township carry forward with no further amendments to the official plan as they relate to the subject lands except as proposed in the draft zoning bylaw. So, before we get into any discussion, Steve, do you, do you want to have, do you have anything you want to start with?
Well, thank you, I, I think my discussion tonight, I think I'll try and keep it fairly brief. The, I understand that you all have a copy of the planning study that was prepared. And so my intention tonight was to just speak to that study a little bit. And then be here to answer any questions that you might have. Just by way of a little bit more background, the interim control study, as Wendy has, has indicated, was required because council chose to pass a interim control bylaw for a, an area of land just west of, of the, I guess, just west of the settlement area of, of Johnstown. And when an interim control bylaw is passed, that provides for an opportunity then for the municipality to undertake a planning study to review the, the issues at hand, or the, the sort of the, I guess, the, the concern that is present. And so what we did in this case is we, we took a, a review of the, the relevant planning policies that are in place. So that meant we, looking at what the provincial policy statement says, what the county's official plan says, what the township official plan says, and what the zoning bylaw says. All this was, was done through a policy review with the view to understanding what is the best use of those lands? And how do they fulfill the directions of the township's official plan with respect to protecting the, the future growth of the industrial park? And what does that area also mean to potential expansions of the settlement area boundaries in the future? So in other words, there's an area of land within the, the interim controlled area that is what I would call sort of a hole in the donut. And that area was the subject of this study. In doing this analysis, it was done largely, or almost, I guess, would say entirely as a desktop analysis. And what I mean by that is that it didn't involve any field work, like site visits, it was done purely using policy documents and an air photo interpretation and other sort of records that are available to us for that purpose. We looked at the land uses in the area, we looked at sort of a lot characteristics in terms of lot sizes, fragmentation, street patterns, that sort of thing. We also looked at servicing of the area. As well as some of the natural features in the area, things like wetlands, water courses, that sort of thing, to try and characterize what are the existing conditions in that, in that study area. Second to that, we undertook to assess what are the different constraints and opportunities associated with that area? In terms of constraints, we looked at things like, what kind of road and access opportunities are there to that area? From County Road number two and potentially from elsewhere. We looked at the implication of the CN rail corridor and highway four sixteen and four oh one interchange. We looked at the fragmentation of lots, so in other words, looked at the parcel fabric of the area to understand what is the opportunity here for development in this area, given the existing lot fabric and road pattern. We also looked at things like land use compatibility between the industrial park to the west end and future residential opportunities to the east and to the south. Looked at servicing opportunities. The, the natural features, opportunities, and of course, the policy implications of that. On the, on the, those are, sorry, on the constraint side, on the opportunity side, we looked at potential for site access. The extension of services to provide opportunity for growth in the area, as well as the opportunity for buffer zones to, to try and mitigate impacts between land uses in that area. So all that to say is we came to the conclusion through our analysis that the area is best served to remain as it is. With the future expansion area designated in the official plan for the Johnstown Industrial Park to expand one day down the road. And then the area itself for that to remain designated as rural in favor of, of changing that designation to something else, like potentially settlement area or to industrial park. The recommendation is that the, the, that the, the expansion area as designated in the official plan be rezoned in the new zoning bylaw with a holding provision, and that simply takes the, the same policy direction as the official plan does today. So it's really implementing what we've already set out to do with the direction for that area. The second recommendation, which, which I would characterize more as sort of an observation, was that in undertaking this study, we observed that some of the constraints associated with this area are very similar, or are sort of, are, are also present with other parts of the industrial park further west, and what I mean by that is things like access and I guess really primarily access and, and how is that land best developed could serve by doing a little bit of master planning to, to really maximize the potential and to make the best use of the industrial park lands. And so, for example, the extent, expansion lands are really cut off from any major access, any functional access by virtue of how they're located to the rear of a residential area. Not very well served by public roads. And so in order to maximize the potential for those lands, really a master servicing, master planning exercise would, would benefit that area. And that would also benefit the Johnstown Park further west, where a lot of undeveloped lands located between the rail corridor and the highway are difficult to access, so it's not that it's a recommendation you need to do right now, but we just felt that it was worth noting that those lands would benefit from that exercise to try and maximize the potential that they, they can offer. So that's the study, I'm sorry it took so long to get to this point, it's been almost a year. And I'll turn it back to the chair now and, and remain here for, for questions.
Good, thanks for the summation of the report, Mr. Pence, it's good. And I will open up to questions, I'm sure. Chris, I'll, I'll start with you if that's, that's a way around my way around.
Yeah, I may, I don't have anything right now, but I may come back.
Counselor, no?
No, I'm good, oh, I'm sorry. I have a question for, for this, Mr. Pence, really chair, and that is, is Frederick Street the only railroad crossing in that area? If we want to expand north?
Did you, did you hear that, Mr. Pence?
It is. Not really, I'm just bringing up the, the image that shows its figure six in the, in the report, just trying to bring that up so I can read it a little bit more clearly. But the question, it's something to do about Frederick Street providing access?
The railroad, is that the only railroad crossing is on Frederick Street up on, in, in that area?
That, that's right, Frederick Street goes all the way from County Road two, right? To the little turnaround at the four oh one. And that's the only access to the industrial park expansion lands currently.
You want to continue, or are you good?
No, I, I was just concerned about that.
Counselor Cameron?
Nothing at the moment.
You want to go last, Mr. Pence?
Yeah.
I, I do have a question specifically about that level crossing.
A level crossing?
Is, is it not a great level crossing across Frederick Street? Love, level being on the same level as the train? Anyway, my question to Mr. Pence is, moving forward with a develop, development of an industrial park, are there? I don't know how to ask the question other than are there deterrents to using a level crossing in industrial parks moving forward based on safety implications? And I, I guess I could refer to the Bar Haven Crossing that has had issues. If, if there was another access made on that area, to that area north of the railroad, is it even possible to put a level crossing in the future, or are industrial parks being designed contemporarily to avoid that?
That's the tough question to answer, in part because we haven't looked at this from the sort of viewpoint of a, of a, of a traffic and, and safety sort of analysis. It is the only access to those lands north of the rail corridor, so they do provide, that road provides access to, I think, two dwellings currently. And unfortunately, that since it's the only access point, you can imagine that future industrial development would rely on that same access that could potentially create a, a, a traffic safety hazard. In, in developing sort of the best approach to obtaining access to that, to that area, I think would require a more thorough look at opportunities for how access could be achieved, whether it comes from, from highway sixteen or whether it, it comes from elsewhere along that section of, of land. Certainly, our observation was that bringing industrial traffic along Frederick Street passes by a fair number of residential houses on a narrow street that wouldn't really serve industrial traffic very well, in our opinion. So we, we think that it, it would benefit looking at opportunities to better achieve access to that site through alternate means.
Just, I'll follow up on Connor's quick, would that be, that, that would be something that we would get under the suggestion of, of a road and servicing master plan? That, that would be included in that, would it?
I think that's where it would be best dealt with. And I'm not sure if we'd call it a road and servicing master plan or conceptual development plan, I think there's a lot of terminology that gets used for similar types of activities. But essentially, I think a bit of a visioning or conceptual planning exercise to, to figure out how to best provide access to those sites, both from a servicing and transportation point of view, or, or would be worthwhile.
Well, so thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I have several questions, and I hope that we'll give you some leeway here.
Lots.
So, um, Steve, the very first thing I want to do is I, I want to go back to figure two of the study. Because in my mind, that was the study, that was the study area, and that was the only study area, is that correct?
So, I'm just going back to figure two.
So that's on page seventeen and forty-nine of our package?
So figure two in, in the report is, is the, is, yes, that's the study area, that's the same area that was identified in the interim control bylaw.
Alright, so now, and I think everybody's aware that we had already had one proposal. We, we won't assess the seriousness of that proposal, but we've already had one proposal for the development of about sixty acres there here in that black area, if I can call it that. And, you know, because we weren't sufficiently ready, nothing came of that proposal, while there were some other problems as well. But my concern now is this, we've put this interim control planning, or interim, interim control bylaw in place. We have a recommendation in front of us tonight now to lift that interim control and to just rely on our existing official plan and the changes that we're proposing in our new zoning bylaw. Have I conceptualized that correctly?
Yes.
We accept this recommendation tonight, this recommendation will go to council, the interim control of bylaw will be removed, and we will be free to develop that piece of property, is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, now, during your study, one of the things you talked about is a, is a master plan for access to that area. Did you look at all accessing that area, not by Frederick Street, but by the extension of Edison Drive? Did you look at all at that option?
I'm just moving to my figures here. So I can have it in front of me, just bear with me for a second. So in figure number six, I think it's a useful one, it, it shows, it shows the existing access to that area.
Now, okay, so, so just give us a second to find figure number six, and figure number six is on page twenty-six of forty-nine. And go ahead, Dan, what were you saying?
That, that figure shows existing accesses, it shows the Frederick Street access, and all the way through the site, it shows Virchell Street coming up sort of to the site, but stopping at that point. And it shows Queen Street, which changes to Charlotte Street, providing access to the site as well. Edison Street that you referred to, I don't believe it falls into that site, and correct me if I'm wrong. In fact, I'm not sure where Edison Street is.
Okay, well, Edison Street is the unopened road allowance at the west side of the study area, and it is an unopened road allowance right to the CN rail corridor, and it touches the northwest corner of the site.
Okay, so that, that is, we, we didn't discuss that as a specific access point, but I, I, I would say that we did consider that as being a potential strong candidate for providing access to the, to the site.
Well, and the reason I'm pointing that out is because when we were in talks with the proponent that was coming to us to develop that land, and his concept was the, the, the various blocks, and I think if we go to the CN rail corridor and we go west of Frederick Street, we can count about three, six, nine, twelve, fifteen blocks there, where he was, well, fifteen less three, so it'd be twelve blocks there that he was interested in developing, and that was where he was proposing a six hundred thousand square foot warehouse. And it would have been accessed by Edison, keeping the heavy truck traffic off both Virchell and Frederick. Now, I mean, there were other problems as well, but I'm just drawing that out because it just seems to me that we have to be very sensitive to the residential uses on the lower end of Virchell and the lower end of Frederick. So I'm just pointing that out, now, Steve, I'm, I'm switching gears here for a quick minute. There's a number of references in the study that I've read here today. There's a number of references to the undeveloped area in the Johnstown Industrial Park. I do not know where there are any undeveloped areas in the, in the Johnstown Industrial Park that are not owned by an existing owner which has developed a piece of them. And, you know, I'm starting right at the very west side, and when I go from the west side right straight through to Greenfield Ethanol, every single piece of property there is owned by an owner. They haven't all developed their properties, Giant Tiger being one, with two hundred and twenty-two acres south of, of, south of the railroad, and I think they've developed probably about sixty or maybe seventy of those acres, but they own the rest. And similarly, Greenfield Ethanol, they own everything right to the CN rail corridor, they haven't developed it all, but it is theirs, so I don't see where we have any undeveloped area in our Johnstown Industrial Park, were you able to find others, other areas that, that I'm not aware of?
No, by undeveloped, what we, what we mean is lands that are available for future additional development.
Okay, so you could, in a sense, say that the Giant Tiger property is available for development, but only by them, right?
That's, that's right.
Okay, so.
And that's a sorry, sorry to interrupt, and that comes to our point about those lands are potentially very difficult again to access, and how does that all come together, there's, there's lots of land available, but it's a question of how do they become developed? They have potential, and that's the visioning that we felt through our second recommendation is an important element to, to this.
Right, okay. Alright, so, in, in any case, we have a recommendation that this study go to council. Council would then remove the interim control bylaw, and we would be, we would then be in a position to receive additional project proposals, is that correct?
Additional project proposals, you meaning to, to do a, a, a planning sort of visioning, master planning exercise?
No, 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 I'm talking about actual sale of land, I have, I have a proponent that's looking for thirty acres for a fifty, got to get the number right, thirty acres for a five hundred thousand square foot warehouse. Now, can I not point him at this, at the, at the northwest corner of this study area and say that's available?
It's, it's available. But like the, the report points out, and I think you've alluded to, access is via the unopened road allowance.
But again, we can control that, council can control that, can they not, they can say it's available, but it is, is going to have to be accessed by Edison Road, Edison Drive.
That, that's right, but what I, what I'm saying is that the lands north of the railway, if, if the, the lands south of the railway are developed without any thought given to how future access to the north could be achieved, you might be sealing those lands off from it, from a, a potential access point.
Okay, I see your point. And, and there is only one crossing, and that is Frederick, and there's no question about that, the in, any proponent that was going to even consider trying to get another rail crossing would have to have extremely deep pockets because CN is just not prepared to accept additional crossings, that's, that's a sine qua non, as a matter of fact, CN has a policy in place to close every existing crossing that they can get, they will pay me a thousand dollars to close my private crossing and, and give it away, give it up, so they're, they're not in the mood to accept new, new crossings. So I would think then, following up on what you're saying, if we were going to keep the traffic, the truck traffic off Frederick Street in the residential area of Frederick Street, we would have to develop Edison Street to the north and then create an, an east-west road along the south side of the rail corridor to, to take advantage of that, to take advantage of that Frederick Street crossing, is that not a possibility?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. And, and would there be any other constraints on us?
On you, sorry, that's a wide open question, I I, I mean, I think there's, there's always constraints, the, the whole area is constrained with matters of of road allowances, residential uses, environmental crossings, proximity to four oh one, all, all those sort of those, those existing features present a constraint in and of themselves. And, and I, and I think the report tried to highlight those as, as constraints, while some of them are constraints, they're also potentially opportunities. So, I'm not sure how to answer your, your question, but I, I think we're on the same page in the sense that access to the area would be best probably served by Edison Street, it's a question of how does that area get developed so as to not for any future opportunity to get to the expansion lands that aren't yet developed or haven't yet, wouldn't yet have been developed.
Right, okay.
It's, and that, and that's really the essence of the exercise that I was suggesting might be worthwhile undertaking to try and, you know, conceptualize a, a street network, a potential crossing that could be pursued to try and make the most of the opportunity that's present. If you recall, we've, we've identified through the official plan, the expansion area of the park. But we don't know how to get there at this point without only going through the level crossing on Frederick Street, whether that's the best option or not, we don't know yet, but it's
The only option, it's the only option, really.
Yeah, you, you might be a hundred percent right in saying that I didn't want to be so straight on it, but it, it probably is the only option.
Okay, now, the one last thing that, that's bothering me is when I'm looking at the study area, and again, now I'm on, I'm on page fig, I'm on page twenty-six of forty-nine, and I'm looking at your figure six, and on your figure six, as I come up Frederick Street from County Road two into the study area, I see a number of red dots which indicates I see a number of red dots which indicates existing residential housing that's built. Uh, uh, facing Frederick Street. So here's my question. As I go across the Frederick Street Crossing across over the CNR. I come to a a small lot on the. North side of the CNR with a little red dot on it, there's a house there. And then I go a little further north, there's a house there. Now, there are two lots in between there that have been sold. I'm told. That those lots have been sold, and we have requests for residential development. On those two lots, private residential development on those two lots. What do we hang our hat on to say to a person that's bought those lots? No, those are not available for residential development.
Um, that would be the the zoning bylaw. The the proposed. Zoning bylaw.
Okay, which is not yet in effect.
Correct.
All right, so how does our our building staff handle themselves in the interim period of time?
Um, in the interim time. You just look at the current zoning bylaw, which I believe has those lands zoned as rural. And um, provided they can meet the rural zone standards for the parcel in question, then a building permit could be issued.
Yeah, but we don't want to issue it. Well, how does our building staff say no?
Well, that's that's, they really can't. It's the the zoning bylaw that is in process. That's implementing the official plan that was approved. In conjunction with the zoning that we're putting on in in the new zoning bylaw is the mechanism that is. That would prevent them, but until such time as that happens. Um. There really isn't anything to stop a residential. Permit from being issued.
But there is. And and what 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 we have to prevent it in the interim period of time is the fact that we have an interim control bylaw in place. And we have, council has not yet lifted that interim control bylaw, so. We can still uh. Take advantage of the interim control bylaw. Until such time as the new zoning bylaw is put into effect, can we not? In other words, we use the interim control bylaw that's in place to prevent further residential development. Until such time as the new zoning bylaw comes into place, which will then prevent it by 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 policy. Is that correct?
That sounds right, yes.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, okay, I'll stop here now because I'm getting things clear in my head. Uh, let others get in here, maybe I've triggered some question in other minds, Mr. Chair.
Um, Mr. War, you reminded me of something that I got my laptop, but it had some questions on it back there, but so. I I I keep coming back to this now after this conversation about. Uh, the four, the six highway sixteen is right there, and I I don't know why we haven't entertained that as as a. You know, it's part of this zone to be able to go into that way, so I don't know if there's an answer to that, but. You know, I still think that, uh, I think it's Sixth Street or something around that area there. Would make a good sense for us to actually enter there that keeps all the traffic away from Johnstown to the two as well.
The basic problem that you have there is with MTO. And the problem that you have with MTO, it's below, it's called sixteen. It's a, it's a four lien divided. And that is just a, it's a, it's an odd, it's a. It's a constraint, and I'm not saying that it couldn't be overcome, but do we want to enter into a four-year project? Uh, you know, do we have a proponent that's prepared to go into a four-year project just to get a an access by four sixteen? I mean, I I just don't think any proponent is going to be prepared to to try to jump that hoop.
That's fair, I mean, I just, I mean, I was, you know, born and bred in Canada, and and I saw the Canada Business, the Northern Business Park take effect, and at first it only had really one main entrance, and that's. Kind of where we're at right now, it's only one way to get into the business park, so I was trying to help avoid that.
Yeah.
Um, and the only other thing too, this is, and then I think you touched on the bit, uh, Mr. Mayor, is is the implications of of housing that's already in the area as well. Uh, it basically is is, it was locked into what it is at this time, and can't do any more improvements along the ways, I I think I'm reading this. If they were to say you wanted to some divide off the property and build a. You know, another home or something, they couldn't do that either, so. Am I reading that correctly?
Did, uh, did you hear the question, Mr. Pence?
No, I I couldn't follow it.
Right, if, so on existing properties, if they wanted to sever off a lot. Uh, and and develop on that more housing, that would also be prohibited as well under this uh, uh, this change, right?
Um. Interim control is is a is a bylaw. Um, under section thirty-four of the Planning Act, which deals with zoning, so it doesn't prohibit land division. It only prohibits land use. So someone could divide a parcel of land, but they wouldn't be able to develop it with interim control being in place.
I'm gonna ask, yeah, I'll I'll ask a question, um, Steve, forgive my ignorance on this, but um. With with interim control bylaws, it can be in effect for a year to. To do this study. Um, we're receiving the study now, does that, does that effectively remove the interim control bylaw?
Um. The study had to be done within that period of time. So the study is done now with its recommendation, and now the municipality is free to. To deal with the outcome of that. Um, so it effectively. Could could allow for the interim control to be. Lifted, if you will.
But, so my my question is, does it require, does the municipal act require us to remove it if we accept this report tonight?
Um, I forget exactly how it was worded, it may, it may automatically. Uh. Repeal itself, just give me a second here.
And and what is the provision that that would allow us? I know we can add. Up to another year to continue doing a study, so if we were to do, or to entertain the idea of. Of doing the the conceptual study, would that be a justification to extend, extend the interim by law? Um. For a while longer?
Um. That's an interesting question, um, the the recommendation for that. Conceptual study. Um, wasn't it really a recommendation out of the. Um, specifically to this, it was more of as an observation that the area could benefit from that sort of exercise. But you could extend interim control, I I believe. In order to carry on with further studies. Um, I'd want to check the Planning Act on that to be for certain. Um, but it's an interesting approach.
See, from, I'm just going to jump in here.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
See, from my point of view, I see that I I see the lifting. Of the interim control bylaw requiring two distinct steps. Number one, council has to receive. Uh, this. Uh, report, that's the first step. And then the second step, council has to repeal the interim control bylaw. And it it just seems to me that until both steps are complete. We have the interim control bylaw to rely on to prevent additional residential development where we don't want it.
If I may. Um, to to the CAO or or the development coordinator, do we know the wording in municipal? Uh, act. Uh. Around interim control bylaw, I understand exactly what the mayor's saying, I just. Want to make sure that by receiving that report of council, it doesn't automatically end. And that I know we have a bylaw in place, but does it automatically end as soon as we receive the report? Or or does it stay in effect for a full year regardless of when we get to the court?
Through through Chair, you if you look at page thirty-seven and forty-nine, which is the actual bylaw.
Yes.
If you look, if you look near the, near the bottom number two, that this bylaw should be in effect on the date of its passing for a term on one year unless extended or. According to section thirty-eight.
And and so I guess my question is, and I don't have that Planning Act in front of me, but is is there anything in section thirty-eight that indicates that? If you finish your study. Uh, in advance of that one year, does it, does it automatically require you to repel your your interim control bylaw? Once you receive the study that you had a year to do?
Through, so so through the chair, as far as tonight, this is committee level, so council has not received the report. Committee, that's reasonable.
Right.
Yes, just that we have Mr. Pence here.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll get that information before council, though.
Correct.
And. Um. Yeah, okay, I think that's.
Now, uh, can I go? Okay, so now, Mr. Pence, I just want to go to a second uh. Issue here. And that is the, um, and I'm back on. A figure six, which is page twenty-six of forty-nine and figure two. Uh, both of which outline the study area. And so there is in the study that I have in front of me here, there's a recommendation that we don't. Uh, in any way, shape or form, adjust the settlement area. But am I, am I not correct? The the settlement area of the, uh, uh, I guess would be called the Johnstown Settlement Area. Uh, but when I look at figure six, there's relatively. Little impact on the Johnstown Settlement Area seen in the. Uh, in the figure six map, is that not correct?
The the settlement area is the area. Um, that's in shaded and sort of a transparent blue color.
Yes, and and that settlement area already exists, right?
Correct.
And and we're not, and you're recommending that we're not making any changes to that settlement area, right?
That's right.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we we you're you're not, there's no reference whatsoever to anything on the east side of sixteen.
That's right.
Well, okay, so that's very interesting, um, okay. Well, those are my questions, Mr. Chair, I'm. I I I think I see a way forward.
Yep. Uh, does anyone else comment, councilman? Yes, I've beat it up pretty good.
One one of the things that I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is that I know that. Uh, Mr. Pence uh has already alluded to the fact that when they, when they talked in their um. In their uh, study about conceptual development plan, I know that he he just. Sort of uh, referred to that in in passing kind of way, but. Uh, I would like to know a little bit more about. How we would go about putting a conceptual development plan in place that that would clearly define. That the access, um. That the access to that area be via Edison Drive, uh, which would, you know, which would go. Which would go north as far as the tracks and then provide an east-west link to Frederick Street just south of the rail corridor. Uh, it it would provide that link just so that trucks would have that uh accessibility. Uh, to the north side of the CN Rail. There is quite a chunk of land there, uh, both east and west of Frederick Street. And and you can see on figure six, there's quite a large chunk of land east of Frederick Street. And north of the CN line, and that's immediately adjacent to. Uh, Highway four oh one, a very desirable piece of property, if it can be accessed. Uh, there's two impediments to access, number one is the rail crossing, and the second one is the creek. Crossing, and you can see the creek there, where the creek crosses Frederick Street is not what I would call a very robust. Uh, bridge culvert development, but it could certainly be uh beefed up to accommodate much heavier traffic. But uh, I wonder, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Pence could give us some sort of an idea of. Uh, how long it would take to do a conceptual plan and and some estimate of cost to do that. It would be nice to be able to tie down uh by means of a study exactly how we're going to develop that period, that piece, because. I know that both through the uh Saint Lawrence uh. Uh, Saint Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission and the county, we are still getting lots of requests. I would say probably three active requests at the present time right now for five to six hundred thousand square foot warehouses. And they're looking for big chunks of land, fifty, sixty, a hundred acres. So I would like to be able to take advantage of one of those, if if at all possible. What would be the delay?
That, is that a question directed to me?
Well, through the chair, yeah, please.
Um, I'm not sure I could answer that question tonight, I think the, it's a question of timing, it's a question of, um. May- maybe if I can suggest leaving that with me to uh further discuss with with staff. Um. And and come up with a bit of a, an approach to how we could. Work through that kind of uh exercise. Um. I think that's all I can offer it tonight.
Fair enough, that, fair enough, thank you. Uh, okay, everybody satisfied? All right, so there is a uh recommendation, and I'll read it one more time, that committee recommend the council receive. The interim control bylaw twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three planning study as prepared. Which recommends the township carry forward with no further amendments to the official plan. As they relate to the subject lands, except as proposed in the draft zoning bylaw, so. Uh, I believe I need a mover for that recommendation.
Can we, can I stop you, Mr. Chair?
Sure can.
Um, yeah, I'd like to see it adapted a little bit.
What do you want to do?
Uh, I would like to see it say that the committee recommends that the interim. Interim control bylaw planning study be forwarded to council. I don't think it's up to the committee to recommend the council receive. But I think committee can can recommend that it be forwarded to council.
See, I know.
Through, through the chair, uh, many of the best. Recommendations usually, our recommendation comes from committee that 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 council see, if it takes interaction. Uh, there's nothing to say that it can't be amended to to indicate that.
Okay, so committee, the committee recommend that council forward.
No.
No, the committee, committee that forward the interim control bylaw to 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 council. Is what the, is what the mayor was indicating.
So just remove, recommend that council receive and add forward?
She removes, received and put through.
No.
That committee forward the interim.
Have to stop it afterward, that. The committee recommends that the interim. Control. Bylaw planning study. Be forwarded.
Where are we forwarding?
Be forwarded to council, council.
Okay, so the planning study be forwarded. To council. And do you have this, or?
The chair, that committee recommend. That the interim control bylaw twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three planning study be forwarded to council. Which study recommends that the township carry forward, no further amendments to the official plan as they relate to the subject plan. Except as proposed in the draft.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I have written now, so that's good, and um, Mr. Mayor, you're gonna move that?
So moved.
And you need a secondary problem, Chris Ward? Any further discussion? None, call the question, all in there. And us. Move on to the next one. All right, so six two, which is the application for severance, James Street and New Street. Uh Barnhart on behalf of Bailey, uh I'll just take one second before we begin to recognize. Uh Mr. Joe Barnhart is is with us in attendance tonight. Uh I I did uh indicate uh and talk to Mr. Barnhart just ahead of meeting to tell him that it's not a delegation and presentation, we don't. You know, expect a presentation from him tonight, but I did indicate that. Uh the way that I chair a committee in these instances is that if a committee member does have a question for him, that I I usually allow that leeway, so. Uh having said that, uh Wendy, if you were. And give us a little background?
Thank you.
Welcome, yeah, sorry.
Welcome. Um, the township received an application for severance for a property, it's on the corner of James Street and New Street in Cardinal. Now the semi-detached dwelling and the single detached dwelling on the property. Um, the application proposes the creation of a new three hundred and nine meter square parcel for the semi-detached dwelling. Which would be the single detached dwelling um on two hundred and seventy-five meters square. Um, the applicant's proposed that a portion of the dwelling at forty thirty James Street be demolished, this is an addition of the back of the the dwelling. Um, it's waiting for a stacked driveway at the rear of this lot, which would give part of to the semi-detached. Uh, building, um, the severance does create some additional deficiencies related to the lot size, those lots would be undersized. The new lot lines are going to create um some uh deficient setbacks as well. And uh the the thirty percent lot coverage for the residential second NC zone also would be that there. Um, but it's supposed that these deficiencies could be addressed by a minor variance as a condition of the severance.
Good, thank you, Wendy, um, all right, let's go with discussion, Conrad, I'll start with you this time.
I don't have any questions at the time.
Okay. Councilor.
Uh basically, just separating the buildings off and go make forever use of the forty twenty eight, forty thirty.
Uh, yes, who is here, so forty twenty eight and forty thirty James Street would be on one lot and three sixty four New Street would be on another one.
Good. Do you want to go last, or do you want to go next, Councilman?
Uh, no, I'm 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 good, I see that the mudroom uh so to speak is going to be demolished. So that's, that that is absolutely.
Yeah.
That's all.
Council, Tullabon?
Uh, yes, with that uh mudroom being demolished, turned into driveway with active sufficient parking, I don't know what the size of it is there. So would that give us sufficient parking for one vehicle per unit?
Almost four. To uh to the development.
According to the chair, so the zoning by law requires one parking space per per unit, you're correct, and that would be a stacked parking, so it would, it does give you two parking spaces.
Something to put for, so aside, in front of mine, too, just two.
On each side.
Two on each side, right, Mrs. Brennan, okay, that's right.
So in fact, I thought about two on on the one side.
Exactly, okay, so you love, that's good, yeah, thank you so much.
Sir.
Um, just looking at this and just making sure that I understand where this could go down the road. So with uh the area to be severed, is there a possibility, I'm not sure what that looks like and what. Or zoning where to allow for, down the road, if four twenty eight or four thirty eventually gets slid into, say, uh, you know, uh. Uh freehold townhomes or something, is that possibility exists there as well, or is that something? You know, what does this do to that, to that possibility as well, is that, so you might go over with it or?
Well, through the chair, but um. The official plan, uh we all know the rule where it allows only two lots to be created by severance, but that is outside of the settlement area, this is within the settlement area. I would note that servicing for forty twenty eight and forty thirty is one one line, it's not separate, so that would have to be dealt with before. Those lots were separated, it just wasn't the application that was, so it's not. Considered, I guess, with enough money and proper planning, anything is possible.
Uh, okay, no, that's all I know, just, just more, more than we've heard, it goes with that, so.
Good, Councilor.
Yeah, speaking to that statement, so we got two units, forty twenty eight, forty thirty. So. Are we gonna have two water and two sewers? Right now, the only one, right? Or am I wrong?
Through the chair, it's it's only one for the semi-detached.
Right now, right, but if you go to two, you need one for each, yes or no?
Through the chair, hypothetically, if they were to sever this, to separate each unit as a semi-detached, they would need to have their own services.
And that's possible down the road, they could be doing that. Seven, forty, twenty, forty thirty separate.
I, sorry, through the chair, we just haven't considered that application, it's not what was, what was requested here, so I think that would involve some further investigation, maybe. Talks with the owner, that's what they wanted to do.
I that's only, I just don't feel comfortable, we're 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 always strong on. One water, one sewer. Per unit. But but again, we don't know, maybe.
So, and I I think what we need to keep in mind is that it's one service per property. And that's what was done at forty twenty eight and forty thirty, add one service to that property and it happened to serve. Semi-detached, so we're we're, it it's not um. Further restricting what's already existing, but if it, if if it was a severance and went into freehold, then an additional service would would be part of that severance. Would be a condition of that severance. To to slip.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right, Mr. Mayor, clarify.
Uh, well, I don't know how many of the members of the committee have been to visit forty twenty eight, forty thirty uh James Street. But forty twenty eight, forty thirty James Street has been a derelict building. Uh for the better part, I would say of eight years. And I recall uh the circumstances under which the building became vacant. And it's a shame that it sat there this long, uh it is a eyesore in the in the buildings, there's no question, and. I'm, I just want to acknowledge uh Mr. Barnhart's uh grit and determination. In working with the owners, uh which actually are domiciled at three sixty four New Street. Uh he's been working with the owners of this property for the better part of three years, four years. To get this severance in front of us, so needless to say, I'm going to support this. This application for a severance, and I'm looking forward to the day in which uh Mr. Barnhart will redevelop forty twenty eight, forty thirty and. Get that eyesore uh down and, well, it won't get it down, but he'll make it look like brand new. I'm quite familiar with the work that he's done in other buildings around the around the town, uh village of Cardinal, and. Uh when he renovates a building, it's like brand new and it's, and this, these will be two uh very affordable rental units, I'm sure. So I'm happy to support this severance.
Okay, having heard that, would you like to move the recommendation?
Sure would.
All right. Let's see, we can find a second.
Okay.
Now, is there further uh discussion on this? Anyone? Uh, everyone has read the recommendation, do I need to read the recommendation? Let's look, yeah, let's just, because it'll be on the.
Through the chair, uh, that committee recommend, that council recommend in favor of severance be twenty three, twenty two. And request that the following conditions be included. One, that a demolition permit be obtained and the existing living room at the rear of forty thirty James Street be removed as identified in the application. Two, that a driveway be constructed on the routine lot in accordance with the grading and drainage plan approved by the township. To show that water runoff will not have any impact on the adjacent land. Three, that the applicant obtained relief from the provisions of zoning by law to the satisfaction of the county. As necessary to provide zoning performance for the newly severed and retained lot and existing lots.
Uh, so we uh have a, we have a second here, uh no further uh discussion, let's just call the question then, all in favor? Uh, unanimous, good, so uh next steps for Mr. Barnhart.
Through the chair, so this recommendation would go to council at the end of the month. Council would make a formal recommendation to the counties, the counties would schedule a public hearing, and you'll be notified about that public hearing. Um, and you could attend if you'd like in the counties as the approval.
And um, uh it also says in in here as well that it's proposed that the deficiencies are addressed by minor variance. Um, does he, can he get going on the minor variance then uh right away, or does he have to wait until that process is finished?
At any time he likes, and applicants prefer to wait until the counties have made a decision. Um, and then apply for a minor variance, um, some applicants, you you you've been to it right now.
Yeah, good, uh, thank you, uh coordinator. Uh, uh, Ms. Barnhart, I am looking forward to seeing that uh building getting back to its long, long past prior glory, so. Good, uh echoing the mayor, good, good on your tenacity for getting here in front of us, look forward to supporting you. Well done, all right, let's move on. Work uh B, six B, uh the community improvement plan uh report. Um, Wendy, do you want to give us a quick, this is a great little update, you want to speak to?
Through the chair, so this report is a long time coming, or it actually um requires that I provide this report to the committee once a year, and I didn't do it last year, it was such a busy year. And it is shaping up to be um a busy year, uh again, for twenty twenty two, but saw a shorter agenda and took the opportunity to bring this forward. Um, so this uh this report just outlines the recent works of the uh community improvement. Plan, um, just want to note, because I know we're going through the budget process, that um the the charts show. Um, by year the application was made, not necessarily the year that the works were finished and the application was paid out, so if you notice. That would be the reason for that, um, yeah, so so well done, awesome improvements to the community here.
Looks, looks to be well used, um, I think I will uh just go to hands up this time instead of going around the table, so uh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, so my apologies, but uh. Through through the chair to to the coordinator, um, I should have given you heads up here, but. Uh, I I know that we put X numbers of dollars into that line item for community improvement plan each year, and I think that twenty twenty would be underspent. And I think twenty twenty one would be underspent, so if I recall correctly, that balance accumulates, does it not? And I'm just wondering what the balance is that we'd have available in twenty twenty two, because I think we'll put more money in again in twenty twenty two.
So, through the chair, I'm, just because of my understanding of the financials, this might be described in very simple terms, but. The money that we don't spend, that's budgeted for um the following year, it just gets topped up, so kind of whatever we spent in twenty.
Oh, I got you.
Twenty one, we we add that to to the next budget, just to to bring it up to the.
Right, and so through the chair, if I can again to maybe the CIO can just remind us, what do we, what do we put into the account each year? We, what's the number that we talked about, two, is it fifteen thousand?
Uh, through, through, through the chair, it is, uh, it's more than that, I just, I'm not sure if it's.
Through the chair, I think, when I first started here, it was thirty thousand, last year, I think it was reduced a little bit because the program wasn't used. Very long, because we had to pay so much out, I think we saw a little bit, um, last year was just twenty one thousandish.
Okay, fair enough.
So, that's good, can, do you, do you want to know what the exact number is?
No, no, just curious on the way by.
Um, I'm curious about one thing, um, uh, this, this CIP number for for this year's survive budget. And and is included for for budget this year, like a full, normal, regular amount of CIP?
Yes, the same, and typically what's been spent in the past, yes.
Yeah, so it was twenty five, there's twenty five of this year's budget for continued CIP.
Through, through the chair, that, that, that's correct.
Okay. Good.
Okay, twenty five is the number, right?
I don't, I don't remember the number either, so, not, not locking you.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have a question in front of me.
Anyone, anyone with further questions on on the report?
Um, yeah, just. Refresh my memory on, it's only certain areas, though, the CIP is is effective, there's areas that the township or not, that they cannot claim this. Like just, well, there.
Yes, through the chair, there is a CIP um and a vector Cardinal and one for Spencerville, and both of those have a defined area um by 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 law.
Because I mean, I just look at, say, you know, if it is twenty five thousand a year that we want to put out there, again, through the chair. Uh, is there other places we'd like to put this opportunity in place to make some of those areas that are not in those areas themselves, you know, maybe become a little more. Scale might be the wrong word, but just improve as well.
Yeah, and and can you remember the process, or can you refresh the process in which we've had to outline those two specific. Areas, and I know we went through looking at Johnstown and why uh Johnstown didn't, didn't qualify. Uh, but I forgot exactly what the process was.
So, I mean, through the, through the chair, it would probably be better sure for 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 staff to return the full bit of a report. So that, yeah, we have some time to uh sort of refresh.
Yeah, I'll need to refresh on exactly that, so. Good. Wendy, maybe for next time?
Yeah, through the chair, and this is to add areas, uh like outside purple in Spencerville, or expand on the current areas, just.
Well, part of it's more of a curiosity, but then I, like I said, I drive around and I see areas that could use some improvements, and so I wonder if that would have benefit them to maybe get a little more motivation also. So, I mean, I'm talking, you know, and then I can, those.
We, we've had the dis- the discussion as to how those, those areas were were lined out, we certainly discussed um what made a village the village and. And and how it was defined, and I know we uh. We talked about what it would take to to expand that, but it's good to, like, the CEO, CEO was pointed out to have a review of that so that we all. Uh, under, understand, and if we want to go through what it takes to to change it to. Yes, there's your last part, there's some other news that you can pull to increase these. Fair enough, okay, good, so no, nothing else on? Not anyone, no, good, uh Wendy, do you want to give us a little? Uh, we've, we've thanked everyone at uh prior meetings, we thanked you at a prior reading when I, when I'm here, but. Uh, for your, for your good work at the uh the Business and Trade Show, but do you want to give um a recap from the committee?
Certainly, through the chair, so, um. All of us here played a role in the small business and trade show, just uh March twenty fourth to twenty sixth. Um, the township had a booth there at the trade show, and it gave us the chance to meet other business owners and talk with other vendors at the trade show, and also interact. Our our residents and and maybe potential future residents um at the show as they visited. Um, as we were planning and preparing this, I did promise the committee that we could have a recap about um any items that came up. Um, during those interactions, and just wanted to provide the committee an opportunity for some discussion, because I can follow up.
Good, um, comments or? Anyone?
Well, before my, uh. Good, Wendy, we already thanked this, and I think it's. Better little goody pack, you said we gave it was well received by the people who owned by when I was there, there was even probably so. And I think uh. And President, we were organizing, did a very, very good job, the animal.
Yes.
Well, I'm just wondering if Wendy might share with us some of her suggestions that she would incorporate in in a, in a subsequent. Next year's kind of thing.
Uh, through the chair, thanks for the opportunity to share that, I. I really loved sharing Edwardsburg Cardinal bags, I really liked the bags that they nicknamed, helped us create. And uh sharing a little bit of Edwardsburg Cardinal businesses to people as they came by, I think it helps to. Um, encourage people to shop here local to us. Um, next year, would love to expand on that, give our businesses a little bit more notice, some of them printed flyers specifically to put in those bags. And I know that designing those is getting them printed takes some time, so hopefully with a little bit more notice and a little bit more advertising, we could. Um, turn that into a bigger program, you'll notice there weren't a lot of Edwardsburg Cardinal businesses as vendors there, so I thought this was just a great way. um to to share that. Maybe next year, if they see benefits from having a flyer in there, they'll want to do better at the trade show. Or um maybe it's just a way to incorporate some local businesses into that trade show through through our booth. I really enjoyed on uh Thursday, there was a lot less traffic there on the first night there, I think just being a Thursday. Um, and getting the opportunity to um just meet and chat with the other townships of us that I thought that were there and and the other businesses. And I I I really think that the event was worthwhile for us to to be there. I'm glad we were represented here and it was, I think it was a good event.
Follow up, if I could. Um, you're right, the number of businesses from Edwardsburg Cardinal is relatively small. And uh I I know that this year I I didn't put the big push on the way I have done in other years to get businesses to get in touch with you or or the organizers to get themselves a booth. LG uh the 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 organizer Annabelle seems to give us lots of time ahead. Uh, does he make a full-fledged push to get businesses involved? Uh, I'm just wondering how we could get more of our local businesses at the table, so to speak, or putting up booth space. And I'm thinking more in terms of retail type businesses rather than, you know, greenfield and ingredient and those kind of places, which really they're they're just there to show the colors and I don't think there was too many of them there. What can we do to get some of the smaller retailers in there?
I'm very disappointed. I worked hard on that to get the the St. Lawrence, I mean, because I thought that would fit right. You know, wheelhouse.
Wouldn't come?
Well, I just didn't have enough time, boats and so on. So because I think something like that, especially in the spring, summer boats.
That's a trap. It's attractive. It's expensive to put a a booth up, but uh Arnie from uh the Kia in Brockville, he seems to come with a full display of cars.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's uh uh ru- but it is run by by L L G approved uh as well, not run by us or.
Oh, yeah, well, it's run by him.
By Prescott, I think we we purchased it with, right?
Yeah, we purchased from him. He just rents the entire arena.
From him.
Yeah. I mean, this, maybe we could look at having our own.
Well, I think he doesn't. We tried our own for many, many years and he does such a a superior job at it. I mean, his backdrop, his curtains just add so much to it. When we tried to do it, we we just didn't seem to be able to to add that that degree of of professionalism that he's been able to add to it. So I give him full credit.
Oh, yeah.
For for stepping up there and filling in there. And I'm quite sure that he does okay financially, but I don't know that. But it's it's an opportunity for our local businesses and and I keep thinking of, well, yours is a good one, uh the Marina, but we've got others, other small businesses that I think would would find it advantageous.
Through the chair, I had more than possibly more than two handful of the conversations about living in the area and 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 it's almost too bad we didn't have people there to to speak to, you know, possible subdivisions and such coming in to help address one of those towns as well.
No, but we did have real estate.
We did have real estate people there, but we didn't have people specifically for areas that I know were were not a thing.
Yeah, but you've also gotta remember, there's a fee, there's a fee for it and it's on a it's on a weekend, the weekday. For instance, the uh, you know, the Marina that could be a busy Saturday could be a busy time for for a Marina and uh you know, doing in my other, I I did tremendous number of trade shows and uh and it's always, it's always it's always a kick up as to whether or not you should be there. But I gotta, I'm gonna tell you something, that if you're not there and people have seen you before, you are remembered for not being there.
Yeah, yeah, sure. I I I meant more actually, you know, even if I hand out from people who are organizing subdivisions, for instance, something that was in our Edwardsburg Cardinal bag would have been a good thing as well, I think, just to be able to slip that into other people's faces. You know, in other minds to say, oh, there's an area, maybe coming down the pipe and uh showing some interest in that area as well, that's all.
We've uh certainly used uh the provincial shop local uh orange signs uh with our local businesses. I've I've often thought that our own shop EC, little signs like that, when we wouldn't do it, if we can get you know, our own uh small businesses and developers and stuff using using that on on their media. Um, and and you know, those little signs seem a little opaque at first, but if we can get them connected that way, there is, there is, if people search that, they'll they'll find it. Maybe potential there too. Um, okay, um, so I'll I'll uh stop for one second, say, uh Wendy, well, well done. Booth looked very professional. It was fantastic. Uh, I'm disappointed that we didn't win Bag Wars and and I really uh hope that next year uh we we champion, um, you know, some kind of sleeping bag sized bag that that we win, that we win Bag Wars next year. To all of the folks, I saw many of you there. Uh, to all of you, uh, thanks for your time. It was fantastic. I I enjoyed the the small amount of time that I spent there as well. So, uh, well done. Uh, and so play, there's nothing under the plate portion. Uh, we're gonna go into inquiries and notices of motion. Before we do that, though, I'm gonna let Wendy go uh first with inquiries and notices of motion, because I think Wendy wants to just let us know something uh that just came about today. So.
Off the press, thank you very much to the chair. I just received word today um from Prescott, actually, that uh Digital Main Street has released another round of funding, so we intend to continue working with uh the town of Prescott. Then Prescott, B I A and the Augusta Township um with uh digital service squad this round of funding. Um, I mean, if if we do get the grant, could be for two years, whereas before it was just a six month time period, which which kind of forces you to start over each time and train a new person. And then um, um, when that term is up, like you need to start again with a new person possibly. So um I think two years is a great time period that will allow us to do some really great things with our online digital service squad and it's such a good partnership. We would support Prescott and like the the grants that we continue.
Much like we did before. Yeah, good. Uh, thank you for that, Wendy. So uh having heard that, uh now, does anyone have any inquiries or uh notices of motion to to bring forward? Counselor Hunt?
I just have a chair to Wendy to give her notice. I had an inquiry today from a a resident on Hyman Road about his neighbor down the road who get permission to up the secondary unit up behind for his sister to move into. He's gonna be contacting, looking to do a similar thing for his aging father. Uh, he wants to construct a base later. Eventually would be turned into a garage, but he wants to build those like a semi detached garage and make it over on the inside for so his father could live it, live beside them for two to three years or so until he has to go to the home. Right now, I can't stay by himself, but where he is, but he's not ready to move into a home yet. I told him by the new official plan and stuff, the government's got forward, they're adding second dwelling units. Easy fix as long as you have the proper land itself, we had it. Well, that dark pot, but he said he has all kinds of properties, so I assume it's one of the bigger lots of height, so. Let me know, like, direction towards you, to whom they're in touch with you. So I should have talked to you and then it'd be with the chief building official to take a look at the property and make sure that you'd like to be in touch with me probably tomorrow.
Thanks, Counselor Hunt.
So so how does that process go? Is that a fairly straightforward process right now?
Through the chair. So right now, our zoning bylaw does not allow second units. Our our draft zoning bylaw does, but our official plan allows it. So if you wanted to do that tomorrow, you would still need a zoning bylaw amendment to win it back tomorrow. But um if you, so you could apply for a zoning amendment or you could wait for our draft zoning bylaw to be approved and go ahead. Then I think either way, it's it's a worthwhile discussion with the Chris Meehan quietly because um we would wanna make sure it's going to conform to the draft zoning bylaw. When when that's approved, or maybe there are other options that we'd like to explore. And I'm happy to discuss.
I think the way we through the chair, I think when we worked the last one, he built it as a garage to start and then after conversion. Follow year that we started top, but to get it done, we get the change and stuff for a lot. We gotta build, we gotta build first for to build, build a storage in the garage and start and convert it.
Well, not the first one we did. It was a home, it was a it was a regular two bedroom, whatever, right? The one we did on Hyman.
Yeah, through the chair, there was a as in the zoning amendment for a second.
Yeah, exactly. And and we put a bunch of conditions, had to be within a certain distance of the hogs and had to be fastened to the same water and sewer.
Right, so probably from property line.
But he got a building first, go build, build, build first.
Yeah, but it didn't, wasn't it garage?
It was a shed that he got the dome for that, and then he went through all the zoning and converted it. It was already built when he started converting into a building. He just met with us and had all the lineups done of where it had to be in one thing, but he couldn't make it a residence.
Ingru and not a discussion, so. Sure.
And and it's more uh my busy work, I was covered for somebody trying to leave and so I paid a lot of attention, unfortunately, but uh do we have an open house to get it for uh for the zoning yet? When we're gonna have that and then try to just take memory of the other time this wrapped up as well.
Yeah, good, good question. So Wendy, if you can update personal statements.
For the chair, we have a uh separate public meeting for um the draft zoning bylaw on Thursday, April twenty first at six thirty. So uh our planners that know the tech will be here, they'll make every presentation, there'll be an opportunity for anyone in attendance to uh speak and give feedback. Um, uh, share, share comments and uh, yeah, I I I hope everybody can attend to hear this.
This is six thirty, right?
Yes, there is a public meeting for a zoning bylaw amendment on Wednesday at six P M. Uh, is yes, I can't remember the property that that's that we don't confuse the two, the draft zoning bylaw is on Thursday.
Uh, further inquiries, Counselor Gilbon?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to ask staff if they could bring a report back in our June C D C meeting to include the hammer of Johnstown to be included in our community improvement plan. Just information.
Yeah, so earlier we we discussed what you would bring, you would bring us, what uh what the the report was or why it allowed uh only Spencerville and Cardinal. That the, you know, whether Johnstown could be included or what it would take to make Johnstown included would be part of of that report.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
Pro- probably June is a better time, right?
June, yeah, that's what that's what you asked, right, June?
I asked for June.
Yeah, so then we can skip.
Maybe the entire report.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so. Okay, and anyone else? All right, so we are question period. We have someone tonight for question period. Do you have any questions for us tonight? We're ready for our question. Uh, sorry to put you on the spot, Joe. Um, hearing no questions, we have no closed session. I need a mover and a seconder for adjournment. So move to the council camera. Don't be shy, Phil. Second move by Chris Ward. Uh, all in favor?
That one's obviously unanimous.
No argument on that one. And and I would like to know, um, a small agenda, yes, and and we still got it done by.